Is May 17, 2018. And Madam Clerk, have we met all the noticing requirements for this meeting?
Yes, we have, Mayor.
And can you please call the roll for counsel?
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Ms. Ragga?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Crumiller?
Here.
Mayor Lempert?
Here.
Ms. Kepzoli? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Hello?
I can't hear you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Here.
Doing.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Here.
Mr. Texarney? Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay, well, I want to welcome everybody again to this special joint meeting of the Princeton Council and Princeton Planning Board. We are here tonight for a presentation of our work to date in developing an affordable housing plan that will carry Princeton through 2025. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Several days ago, we lost one of our community's strongest advocates for affordable housing, former Township Mayor Jim Floyd. Jim was guided by an unwavering moral compass, and he fought his entire adult life for a more equitable and diverse Princeton. Jim is largely responsible for the foundation of affordable housing that we will build upon tonight, so please join me now in a moment of silence. So Princeton is currently in the second phase of a two-step court process. The first step is complete. Superior Court Judge Mary Jacobson has determined that Princeton has an obligation to create a realistic opportunity for the construction of 753 units, affordable units, between 1999 and 2025. For the second phase, Princeton will submit its housing plan for that period to the court, showing how the municipality will meet this number. The council and the planning board are committed to submitting a plan that works for our community, a plan that creates opportunities for greater diversity and helps us grow in a smart and sustainable way. Princeton's affordable housing efforts are rooted in our commitment to a diverse, welcoming, and sustainable community. If done right, affordable housing can help advance these goals, and it can also add to the economic health and sustainability of our community. Affordable housing can provide homes for people who work in town and create new customers for local businesses. It can help turn car commuters into cyclists and pedestrians. The plan we'll be submitting to the court isn't finished yet, but we felt it was important to solicit public feedback at this time. Many of you have already seen large pieces of the plan. Some of it has already been built because the plan is backdated to 1999, and many of the other proposed sites were presented at a joint public meeting of the Council and Planning Board on November 24, 2015. Even though we are in litigation, we have done our best to make this a planning process. In determining sites for affordable housing, we have aimed to identify locations that are consistent with the goals outlined in our master plan that are not located all within a single area of town and that advance Smart Growth Principles. Smart growth is a way to build towns and neighborhoods that are economically prosperous, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable. The sites you'll hear about tonight are the ones that have been identified as the most appropriate for additional housing and represent our best thinking at this point, but we do look forward to your input, and that is part of the point of tonight's meeting. Lee Solo, Princeton's Town Planner for the past three decades, retired last month, so I wanted to introduce a new face at the table, Joe Burgess of Burgess Associates. Joe has been actively engaged in New Jersey planning for over 35 years and has extensive experience in affordable housing, and he will be providing planning services to Princeton specific to our affordable housing planning and associated rezoning over the next several months, and we're very happy to have him onboard, so welcome. In a moment, I'm going to be handing the gavel over to Council President Jenny Crumiller and will be recusing myself from tonight's discussion regarding the plan itself and the individual sites, and this is because Princeton University owns two of the sites that are on the list for affordable housing development, and my husband is a professor at the university. Councilwoman Howard is also recusing herself because she is a university employee. Throughout this process, we have followed the advice of the municipal attorney, which has been to recuse ourselves only when those particular university properties have been discussed. However, as a practical matter, it will not be possible, given the nature of the presentation tonight and the question-and-answer period, to recuse only from that portion of this discussion specific to the university sites. Going forward, we will recuse ourselves from any rezoning required of university properties, and will also recuse from voting on the Fair Share Plan as a whole, but will participate in all the other rezoning or ordinance changes that are not related to the university. And I know, Wanda, you wanted to say something as well?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that all of you are anxious to move on to hearing about the sites and numbers, but I would like to remind you that on June 7, the entire Princeton Planning Board will sit as the Master Plan Committee to review and hold a public hearing on the draft of the new housing element of the Princeton Community Master Plan and Princeton's new Fair Share Plan. The purpose of the June 7 meeting is to ensure that Princeton's new affordable housing plan is consistent with the goals of the master plan and that the new Fair Share Plan adequately documents the municipality's housing stock, demographics, employment market, sustainability efforts, and opportunities for low, moderate, and middle-income housing construction, both historically and in the present and in the future. The draft of the housing element in the Fair Share Plan was developed by the council, the planning board, the professional staff, with Shirley M. Bishop as our consultant. I have been advised by the planning board attorneys to recuse myself from participation in tonight's meeting because my husband also is a professor at the Princeton University, and several of the sites under consideration are owned by the university. In order to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest, I have asked Gail Ullman, who has chaired the Master Plan Committee for several years and is vice chair of the Planning Board, to take the chair in future discussions involving Princeton University. Thank you.
This should be a little ceremony, but...
So thank you, Liz and Wanda, as you're leaving. Thank you for your remarks. I also want to thank everyone here for attending and for caring about affordable housing in our community. First, I'd like to introduce the staff and professionals that are sitting up front, and if you want to raise your hand so people can tell who you are, because I think it's nice for people to know. Trishka Cecil is our municipal attorney. Alan Porter is the planning board attorney. Joseph Burgess is our planner, and David Novak is also a planner. Let's see. Mark DeShield is our administrator. Shirley Bishop is our planning expert. Eileen Cutrino is our assistant to the planner, and we have Kathy Brzezinski is our municipal clerk. Mr. Burgess is going to give us an overview of the sites, and then Mr. Trisselli will talk about the 100% affordable units. After the presentation, we will hear from the public. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Burgess.
And good evening, everyone. We have just begun our work for the municipality. Whoops. Now it's on. Now it is on. Okay. Let's try that again. My name is Joe Burgess with the firm Burgess Associates, a firm that represents about 45 municipalities throughout the state, and we're active in the field of affordable housing. And we've been retained just recently to assist Princeton in the final preparation of its plan. This evening, what I would like to do is provide a little background information on the issue of affordable housing. I'll start off with some background information, identify what the municipality's affordable housing obligation is, identify the manner in which we seek to address that obligation, and then identify the timeline that the municipality is obligated by the court to adhere to in order to achieve certification of its plan. Now, this whole issue is, I'm sure many of you in the audience are aware, goes back to 1975. Now, I know that's close to 40 years ago. I'm not going to belabor a 40-year history, but just take two minutes to identify a few critical points. In 1975, the New Jersey Supreme Court ruled that every developing municipality in the state of New Jersey has an obligation to address its fair share of its regional housing need. Now, the decision runs many, many pages, but it comes down to basically the sentence that I just mentioned, and over the next number of years, municipalities all fought over whether or not they were a developing municipality or not, because they always could find statistically another municipality that was developing at a greater rate than they were, so consequently, they were not developing. And by 1983, while a lot of lawyers and planners were very active making these arguments, not much in the way of affordable housing was actually ever being built. So in 1983, the Supreme Court revisited the issue, and there, they said, "We're going to scrap this idea of developing municipalities, and we're now going to say that every municipality had an affordable housing obligation." And simply put, those municipalities were in a growth-share designation of a state plan would have a greater obligation than those municipalities that might be identified in a non-growth area. And that was called, the first case was called Mount Laurel 1, the second case was called Mount Laurel 2. In 1986, we had Mount Laurel 3, because in that 1983 decision, the court also urged the state legislature to deal with this issue, and they did. They adopted a Fair Housing Act, and they went about and created the Council on Affordable Housing. The acronym is cut with, I'm sure everybody in this room has heard of. In 1986, the court determined that the Fair Housing Act was in fact valid, and it allowed this whole process to proceed. COA was obligated to adopt housing need numbers for every municipality every six-year period, and in Round 1, which went through from 1987 to 1993, they set forth numbers, and in Round 2, they set forth numbers from 1993 to 1999 using a very specific methodology. Everybody complained about that at that time, but now, in retrospect, we look upon that as the golden age of affordable housing in terms of the methodology, because in 1999, COA couldn't come to grips with how they were going to deal with their housing need numbers that they were statutorily required to prepare. And they tried a completely new methodology that was a great variance from the methodology used in the first two rounds, and over a period of 16 years, they prepared a series of housing need numbers based on new methodologies, none of which would pass constitutional muster. Finally, in the year 2015, with Mount Laurel 4, the Supreme Court ruled that COA has become dysfunctional. Not my term, that's the term that the Supreme Court used to describe what has happened with COA, and they said that, just like prior to the creation of COA, the courts were again going to take over this process, and they have ever since. They did, at that time, urge the state legislature to deal with this issue. Nothing happened. COA, again, couldn't come up with numbers. The Supreme Court had the courts take over, and this is where we are today. Now, there are two additional decisions by the courts which are notable. One, in 2017, regarded something called the gap period. That's that period from 1999 to 2015, when COA was not preparing new housing need numbers. And in 2017, the courts ruled that there was, in fact, an affordable housing obligation that was generated during that 16-year period that had to be affirmatively addressed. And then, most recently, as I'm certain everybody here is aware, in 2018, Princeton and West Windsor, as part of the entire Mercer County Affordable Housing litigation, Judge Jacobson came down with her decision identifying, excuse me, a modified methodology to be used to determine what every municipality's affordable housing obligation is. Now, in terms of the affordable housing obligation for Princeton, initially, E-Consult Solutions was a company hired by a municipal consortium of about 350 municipalities. Municipalities hired E-Consult to prepare what they thought was Princeton's affordable housing obligation, as does other municipalities, and those numbers are before you on the screen. The numbers are broken down into four components. Everybody has a prior round, excuse me, a rehabilitation obligation, and that refers to the number of existing housing units in town that are occupied by income-qualified low- and moderate-income households and need repair. Secondly is the prior round obligation. That's that period from 1987 to 1999 that every municipality was obligated to address. Thirdly is the gap period number, and then finally is the prospective or future obligation going from 2015 to 2025. I'm not going to repeat all the numbers that E-Consult Solution prepared. You can all see them on the screen. Fair Share Housing Center, a housing advocacy group representing the concerns of low- and moderate-income families, prepared their own numbers on behalf of those families everywhere. Those numbers are also identified on the screen before you. And then Judge Jacobson came up with a new methodology, and applying that methodology for Princeton, the numbers are as follows. There's a rehabilitation obligation for 80 units. There's a prior round obligation of 641 units. There's a gap period obligation of 388 units, and then finally, your prospective or future obligation of an additional 365. The number that the mayor mentioned, the lawyer, of 753, is the combination of the gap period and the prospective obligation. Now, the COA regulations in large measure still apply, and they identify a whole host of different compliance mechanisms that municipalities can use to help meet their obligation. You're not obligated to address all the items identified on the chart before you. You can mix and match the way you choose to address your obligation. Now, one of the questions I often get in these kinds of discussions is, what are the income limits or levels that would make a family income-qualified to occupy one of these dwelling units? And the numbers are before you. These are the 2017 regional income limits for your housing region. There's a spreadsheet table identifying everything from a family of one to a family of eight. Quite frankly, all that information didn't fit on this slide, so we just identify for you a two-person household to a five-person household, but just for the sake of the discussion, if you focus just on the three-person household, the median income for a three-person household in this region is about $84,900. To qualify as a moderate-income household, you can have 80% of that figure, and to be a low-income household, you have 50% of that income. So consequently, you can see that if you're a three-person household with an income of $67,900, you would income-qualify for a moderate-income unit. We all understand where incomes are today. Clearly, you know, the indication is that many of these kinds of meetings concern about, you know, Section 8 housing, is this Section 8 housing or not? Clearly, given these kinds of incomes, it is not. The COA regulations identify a series of criteria that have to be evaluated to determine whether a site is appropriate for an affordable housing unit. We call these the ABOS because in the regulations, we talk about available, approvable, developable, and suitable. Being a state agency, the terms that are defined are not anywhere remotely close to the terms that you or I would define away from the COA process. So, for example, an available site is simply one that has clear title and free of any encumbrances. An approvable site is one that is consistent with all the applicable rules of all applicable agencies, and that does, in fact, mean that even if the site is not zoned for that use, you could still designate the site or conclude that the site is approvable. Developable simply means that it has access to water and sewer infrastructure, and finally, suitable talks about compatible land uses, appropriate site access, and the like. Now, the mayor, I think it was the mayor, had commented about how the municipality also uses Smart Growth Principles of the state to identify the appropriateness of a site to be considered for affordable housing. I'm not going to identify all of them for you. You can read them, but clearly, Smart Growth Principles talks about such issues as fostering a walkable neighborhood, having a strong sense of place, protecting environmentally sensitive features, and the like, and all of these principles were factored into, with respect to the sites that you're about to hear. Now, let's talk about the sites themselves. The seven or eight sites that are being identified to address that 753-unit obligation are on the chart in front of you. I'm going to go into these properties in detail in a minute, but in addition to identifying a number of proposed sites, it is important to recognize that in addition to that, there are a number of existing affordable housing sites that exist in the community and that are going to be used to help meet this 753-unit obligation. In addition, there are other sites, there are some of the sites that allow you to get bonus credits, additional bonus credits, to, again, help meet that obligation. So, the map, there we go, the map before you identifies the sites that are mentioned on that first chart and identifies the locations of all these sites. Next, we have a number of sites that have to meet that prior round obligation that I spoke about earlier. These sites already exist, and they are all identified on this exhibit before you. Now, I'm sure you are aware of many other affordable housing sites that are not being identified to meet your obligation, and the reason for that is simple. In quite a number of instances, the developments were built prior to April 1 of 1980. That is the cutoff date for whether or not a project can be used to enable a municipality to achieve credits for those units. So those account for about seven of the 10 or so projects that are mentioned. There are two additional projects that were approved and built, but they have preference solely for Princeton residents first. The COA regulations don't allow for you to get credit for those kinds of units. And then finally, through litigation, there was one development that had a 20-year deed restriction, whereas the COA regulations require a 30-year deed restriction, so we can't get credit for those units either. And these sites are all identified on this exhibit before you now. Now, to the individual sites. The first property is the Butler Truck, which is located on South Harrison Street at Sycamore Road. This is a 36-acre property, proposed to be zoned at a density of 12 1/2 units to the acre. When you do the math, that would suggest that this site can be developed for about 450 dwelling units. With a 20% set aside, you would get 90 affordable units out of that. Now, one of the things I often hear at these kinds of meetings is what those 12 1/2 units per acre mean. So what we try to do is find comparable developments with somewhat similar densities so we can identify them for you, and hopefully, you'll be familiar with those sites. So with respect to the Butler Truck, the one that we found that was closest in density is the Griggs Farm Property. This is developed at about 11 units to the acre. So if you know the Griggs Farm Property, and it's shown on the left-hand side in terms of its developed character, and on the right, in terms of, you know, an aerial view with the tax lots overlaid on it, that could give you a sense of what the 12 1/2 units to the acre would look like. Secondly is the Lower Alexander Track, which is contemplated for mixed-use development. Now, this property is identified on Alexander Road, and you could point out Faculty Road to give a sense of relationship. Now, the lower portion of this track is all wet and not developable, so the entirety of any development here will occur within this stem that sticks out towards the top of the exhibit. And this property is 19 acres in size, and it is contemplated to be zoned at a density of 16 units to the acre. That would suggest 300 units with a total of 60 affordable units. Now, we could not find a project exactly at 16 units to the acre. The closest one we found is the Murwick-Stanworth Development, and that is developed at 20 units to the acre. And David, if you could point that out. It's that track that David is outlining in green, and you get a sense of how much building development occurs there and how much green space is on those sites at 20 units to the acre. Thirdly is the Franklin Housing at the corner of Witherspoon Street and Franklin Avenue. This site is only three acres in size, and is contemplated to have 80 units, which is a density of 26.6 units to the acre. It would include a total of 60 affordable units. Now, again, in terms of a comparable, we couldn't find something in the municipality at that density, so again, we're using the Murwick Development, which is at 20 units to the acre, to give a sense of scale. Following that is the Terhune-Harrison Assisted Living Development. This is at that intersection. This is a 4 1/2-acre track with a total of 89 beds. We get nine affordable units out of this. Now, the comparable here is at 775 Mount Lucas Road. This is a 5.6-acre property with 120 beds, so if you know that... This is a four-and-a-half-acre tract with a total of eighty, it gets its eighty-nine beds. We get nine affordable units out of this. Now, the comparable here is at seven-seventy-five Mount Lucas Road. This is a five-point-six-acre property with a hundred-and-twenty beds. So if you know that, that complex, you get a sense of scale in terms of assisted living and how much development can occur on this property. Then we have a larger area of Cherry Valley Road and, I cannot read the street name. Thank you. And these are new glasses, go figure. This is the, referred to as the S-two rezoning. It's a twenty-five-acre tract. Now, obviously, some of these properties, in all likelihood, won't develop anytime soon, if at all. But if the area were developed pursuant to the rezoning, it would develop at six units to the acre. And if the entirety of the area were to redevelop, you would get a hundred-and-fifty dwelling units, thirty of which would be affordable units. Now, a similar density at six-point-seven units to the acre was found at Princeton Community Village. This is a thirty-five-acre tract containing two-hundred-and-thirty-nine units. And again, you could see the magnitude of the landscape amenity and green space on this property to give you a sense of scale in terms of what the S-two rezoning is envisioned to encourage in, in the future. Then we have three, excuse me, we have three-seventy-five Terhune. Again, this is on Terhune Avenue, east of Harrison Street. Now, this is a two-and-a-half-acre property. At ten units to the acre, it would generate twenty-five units, of which five would be affordable housing. And the comparable is Queenston Commons, which is ten acres, and is developed at eight units to the acre. So you get a sense of scale, again, in terms of the magnitude of development versus landscape amenity and impervious coverage on the site. Then we have the shopping center at South Harrison Street, south of Terhune. This is an existing shopping center, obviously. It is being contemplated at a density, to be redeveloped at a density of five-point-four dwelling units to the acre, which would result on this twenty-acre, twenty-eight-acre property to about a hundred-and-fifty units, thirty of which would be affordable units. And here, we found, again, Princeton Community Village at six-point-seven is the closest developed site with a comparable density. And again, you could see the relationship of how this site is developed. Finally, finally, is Lidle Street. Now, this is only point-oh-six acres, two units of affordable housing on this site. We don't have a comparable for this. There are a number of such sites in the community, but I believe this is the last one. Now, the mayor or the chair mentioned earlier about the tight time constraints the court has put Princeton under. So let me walk you through our timeline, starting with this evening, where we're holding this joint council and planning board meeting. By the end of next week, we have to notice for this housing plan, upcoming housing plan hearing, which means that we have to get the document on file by the end of next week. In the month of June, the planning board, on June 7th, is going to hold its public hearing on that housing plan. The following week, the beginning of the following week, on the 11th, the council will be obligated to endorse that plan. Now, if the planning board doesn't complete its housing plan in the first week of June, they have also set aside the 14th as a second meeting. And then if that were to occur, the endorsement by the council would occur the following week as well. And they have a second date also left available if they need that for additional meeting time. Following that, on the 24th of July, is the compliance hearing in court. The municipality is also obligated by this structured process to prepare and adopt certain ordinances to implement the plan. And we have until July 24th to do all of that. They are required to introduce the ordinances no later than the 13th of August. The planning board will review those for consistency with the master plan, that's the hearing on the 20th. And then the following week, the council holds its public hearing and adopts, formally adopts the ordinances. So you can see, this is a very truncated process with very tight time constraints. And with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you very much for that. And I, we might have some questions for you, so we're going to do all the questions at once later, so thank you. Next, we're going to have Ed Truselli from Princeton Community Housing, and he's going to explain, a lot of people have asked us, why can't we have one-hundred percent affordable housing for all of our housing so that we don't have to have all the extra development? So, one of, that's a little bit of what he's going to talk about, and he's going to talk about how it's financed. Mark, did you want to add to that?
I think you've covered most of it. Really what we want Ed to come up and talk about is really the financing options and then some of the costs, so some people have some perspective on financing one-hundred percent affordable units.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Should I face any particular direction? I'll face the audience. Good evening. My name is Ed Truselli. I'm the executive director with Princeton Community Housing, and I want to thank the council and the board for recognizing Jim Floyd. He is a man who's going to be very difficult to forget, and he was a founding member of Princeton Community Housing, along with John Borden, who also recently passed. And I want to thank both of them for, and many others, for all of their efforts to further affordable housing and the discussion about affordable housing in Princeton. So I don't have the benefit of any wonderful slides or graphics, I'm just going to talk. And I may rely on my notes a little bit, as I do, but I'm going to try and give a little bit of a broad overview of affordable housing, one-hundred percent affordable housing financing. There are a variety of means to finance affordable housing, and generally, that variety is present in almost every community or development of affordable housing that you can think of. Just as there are many planning tools available for designing and planning and locating affordable housing, there are many tools available to finance it. There are things that you may be familiar with, like conventional mortgages. There are owners who may be able to contribute property or funding, their own equity, so not unfamiliar terms to many of you. There is the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency, which some of you may or may not be familiar with, but it is a quasi-state organization that administers what's called the nine percent and four percent low-income housing tax credit programs in the state. The New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency also offers taxable and tax-exempt bond financing for affordable housing. So those are, I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute, but those are some major tools, aside from conventional borrowing and owner equity that are often used. There are also sources of funding from a municipality. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is oftentimes a source of limited funding from a municipality. There are grant programs that you may be familiar with. There's the Federal Home Loan Bank that offers funding in the form of a grant to a community that's being developed. There is also many private foundations that have funding. And, you know, again, all of those components are typically present in a development of an affordable housing property or community. It is, it is, I have not, in my limited experience, but extensive nonetheless, experience, ever seen a, an affordable housing community that has not had a composite of all these funding sources in them. And again, the low-income housing tax credit is a very well-utilized vehicle for financing affordable housing, so I want to talk a little bit more about that. It's a competitive process, so of the components that I mentioned, it is, again, the only one that is really competitive. Some of the grant programs and some of the resources from the county or the state might be competitive, but in terms of the scale of how the tax credit equity that can be brought into a project is compared to the need for the funding, it is, the tax credit program is, has the most risk in terms of applying for it, and you don't know whether you're going to get it because it's a competitive process. There are requirements for each project that are, or criteria for each project that has to be satisfied in order for you to be considered, and then there's a whole sort of rating process that for each round, each year, each individual application has to be considered by. So what is, what is actually a tax credit? Well, it's a, it's a dollar-for-dollar equity contribution to a project. A developer will essentially, if the developers awarded the tax credits, he'll be able to work with a syndicator who will sell those credits to an investor, who will then contribute equity to the project to basically enable it to be realized, to make it financially feasible. The investor will get that tax credit over a ten-year period, and during the time of the compliance period, which is typically thirty years, the owner of the property or the manager of the property has to make sure that the community is maintaining all its requirements in terms of offering the units to eligible households and managing the property in the way that it needs to be managed. So again, it's a, it's a, it's a primary vehicle, it's very important, but it is competitive. So that makes it a little more difficult because as this illustrates, a lot of towns and municipalities in New Jersey are going to be needing to develop affordable housing, and a lot of folks and organizations are going to be applying for the tax credit. And so it's going to be even more competitive perhaps than it's been in the past. So that's a, Mark, that's a quick overview. I don't know if you want me to go any further detail, but that's kind of a quick overview. Did you want me to talk about costs?
If you could talk a little bit about the cost, that'd be great.
Yeah. So another, I should also mention in terms of funding, organizations like Princeton Community Housing, we are also advocating and fundraising for affordable housing development and also to support our existing communities. So that's another source of funding I failed to mention, but an important one too. In terms of costs of affordable housing, affordable housing is no different than housing that you might find anywhere, market-rate housing. It's not luxury housing, of course, but it's built to the same codes and standards that any housing would be built to. It's, it's built to be solid, quality construction, so it will last and it will house people comfortably in a quality environment. So affordable housing isn't necessarily less expensive than housing in general, with the exclusion of the high-end luxury housing, of course, but it varies, again, like anything else, cost of affordable housing depends on a lot of factors that you can imagine that are different from site to site or location to location. Oftentimes, affordable housing has to be built using union or prevailing wage rates because of the way the projects or the developments are financed, so that has a factor also. You know, depending on what kind of a building it is or what kind of a development, if it's wood-framed construction, it might not be as expensive as a mid-rise building that's built out of more robust construction like concrete and steel. So again, you have a wide range, but as a rule of thumb, you can look at a number of about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a unit, and that's just a rule of thumb. That number can be more or less depending on a lot of factors, again, all the things that I just mentioned. But that's a rule of thumb that is often used, just again, on the back of the envelope, so to speak, to get started and think about what, what is the order of magnitude of a, of an affordable housing construction cost. So, Mark, is that satisfactory? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. As a follow-up, I think other people might have this question, and I was, Shirley Bishop, I was wondering if you could answer this question. Can we put, how many one-hundred percent projects can we include in our plan?
There's basically no number set that says you can only have one or you can only have two. But if you have a one-hundred percent affordable project in your plan, if you do not receive the nine percent tax credit, then the municipality or the sponsor would probably apply for the four percent tax credit, and there's a difference, a huge difference of millions of dollars that would have to subsidize to make the development whole. So in many municipalities, there's only one tax credit application that is funded. You may have two or three that go in, but again, the towns are very sensitive to the fact that if those units are in the plan, those units must be realized somewhere in the municipality.
Thank you. And I believe, I thought we had to demonstrate in the plan that we had the funding.
Yes. In the plan...
I mean, at the time we submit, the town would have to demonstrate that it is on the hook for any housing.
Right. There has to be a pro forma, a construction schedule, an implementation schedule, and also a scoring sheet. HMFA, Housing Mortgage Finance Agency, has a scoring sheet for each nine percent development. And only, only if you can score to the highest number do you even have a chance of receiving the nine percent tax credit award. It's very competitive.
That, the picture froze on the people watching. I don't know. David?
I just wanted to make a little clarification to one of the things that Mr. Burgess mentioned. The comparable that he suggested for the shopping center in terms of density was PCV, Princeton Community Village. And I think that's a little misleading because that suggests we're going to tear down the shopping center and replace it entirely with housing, and that's not what's being envisioned for that site. So really, what we're talking about there is probably something quite a bit denser on a small part of the property, something that might be mid-rise to get the units that we're talking about there.
Thank you. Okay, I think now we'll get to the part that I think people are waiting for, and that's to speak. Could, I see people raise hands who have, want to speak but who didn't sign up. Okay, just a few, okay. Okay, so first on the list is Alvin McGowan, and T. DeMiglio is on tap, so if T. DeMiglio could get up so we don't have to wait while he walks to the microphone. We're going to limit each person to three minutes out of courtesy to everyone and make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. And there's a timer, the timer is right there, and it makes an obnoxious noise when you, when you reach your limit, so be prepared.
Hi. There was actually a good summary at the beginning of what this process is, but to reinforce, this started in nineteen-seventy-five. It was eight years before the Supreme Court came back to this again. Still didn't find the enough affordable housing being produced. And then it was another thirteen years before actually we got to COA and the system was set up. But still, that didn't end, that still didn't end the, end the process at all because now we had this gap that could not be an agreement by the, by the government as to, you know, how are we going to be constructed if, and COA was dysfunctional. So then we had a gap from nineteen-ninety-nine to two thousand and fifteen. My point is, it's time, and we've got a plan. It's not going to be the perfect plan. There are always those things, but now's the time to do it. And I'd also like to remind everyone, resisting, wanting to go through a plan, wanting to resisting is, is not a very good idea. Why Wes Windsor went through a builder's suit, and that's what's at the end, that's what's at the end of all this. That's a lot of, spending a lot of money on lawyers, and if you lose it, you think this plan is bad now? That's really going to be something that, that's, that's... That's really going to be something that, that's, that's disastrous. So those are really my, my comments. I think it's a good plan and we should go forward.
Thank you. T. DeMiglio, and then Peter Madison, if you could line up.
Good evening. First of all, I didn't realize I signed up to speak, but I'm here anyway. Tony DeMiglio, Callaway Henderson, Sotheby's, I want to congratulate everybody on the job they're doing. I'd like you to please identify for us the two properties that are owned by the university so we have understanding of what those properties are. And, and I, I look at the plan and I look at, you know, what, what this is, and, and under the timeframe and the timeline you're under, I think, I think the proposal looks okay. I think there needs to be some backup plans because apparently some of these may not work, and I'm just wondering how prepared the committee is for rejection of some of these sites. That's, that's it, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. We're going to answer the questions, we're going to listen to some and answer the...
Thank you.
Peter Madison, Snowden Lane, resident for 40 years. Just a few comments. One, I understand that you couldn't discuss certain things because of legal implications. However, I think there were other generalized topics that could have been discussed, which, for example, might have been how we go about providing this affordable housing, what the alternatives, the financing alternatives are amongst the public. So we're having, we really have little public input because tonight is our first opportunity to speak and hear about this, and yet we've already heard how in, I guess it's June or July, it has to go in, in for compliance. So essentially...
Could you clarify the question about the financing? I, I don't think I heard it.
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So, um, we really didn't have much public input at all, period. And I think that that could have been rectified. Secondly, we talked about, we're approaching this problem apparently through inclusionary zoning. You don't show it, but I added it up, and that means a total of units, not the affordable, but the total units of 1,259. And the sleeping giant behind all this is how much school children are going to be generated by 1,259 units. And consequently, at some point, we are going to have a significant bond issue over and above $129 million, it's now being suggested. So this is not necessarily, trying to pass it on to developers to pay, meet this through 20% inclusionary zoning is not a simple, cheap way out of this. And third, Mr. Tracelli mentioned about all these various financing methods, but yet there was no discussion about what, how you looked into these alternatives. Did you speak to private developers who do this? For example, one of our Princeton residents is the president of CIS Housing, or CIS? Yes, they're in Lawrenceville. They're a very successful developer of affordable housing. There are numerous companies that do affordable housing and take care of all these tax and financing programs. And it sounds like we have just written that off because we have not heard anything about how this procedure was. It's just, we're going to use inclusionary zoning and that's the answer. So I'm disappointed in the way this has been handled, and I have a serious concern that we as taxpayers are going to be hit one way or the other. If, 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 if nothing else, we're going to get hit by the increased school enrollment that 1,259 units are going to require for this 20% inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Next is Kathleen Cassidy, and Sarinda Sharma is on deck. I forgot to take you on deck. And that's it.
I signed up primarily because I hadn't seen the plan before tonight, and I wanted to be sure that there was an opportunity to talk about the fact that we really need to have affordable housing throughout the community, and that it also needed to be in keeping with smart growth principles. I'm generally pleased with what I see at a, at a quick basis, and so I really want to commend the work of both the planning board and the council, and to ask people to move quickly ahead to get this plan into effect. We need more affordable housing in Princeton.
Thank you. Sarinda, and then Kate Warren after that.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Dr. Sarinda Sharma. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the hard work you guys are doing, but I do have some very specific issues with this. I believe this is not it being a proactive and innovative solutions. What we are trying to solve the problem today is going to be facing it again. We talk about we have been proactive in terms of affordable housing since 1930s, and that's two and a half generations ago. If we were really proactive, we should have no problem today. Everybody should be above the minimum income level, and we shouldn't be talking about the issue today, and we still are. And we will still be talking about it like 20 or 50 years from now if we can continue to do a piecemeal issue. So what I did was, I came up with this solution where the municipality takes a proactive approach. So what I am proposing and what I have been talking about to anybody who listens to me is to have the parking lot, which is right here, have a mixed income, mixed use, and Ms. Fraga will also have your laundromat in there and restaurants and businesses on the first floor. And we can do that, and that, the reason I'm saying is, yes, we, no private financier will finance such a building. However, municipality can set up an example. Here, we want to solve the problem, will give you a lease for 99 years for a dollar or 100 or whatever the case may be. And they make the profit, and we keep the, we, we solve the affordable issue in a very innovative way because the tracks you are using today, you will need it from 20 years, 30 years from now for other things like schools and all that. So what I'm saying is, we have to look at it from a bigger perspective. And so it answers your question regarding financing. Yes, the municipality can help. They have the parking. We can give that land because we want to solve the problem. And now going to the very specific issues like the Butlera track. We just went to the meeting with Princeton University with the council, and we listened, and there was a very open discussions. They gave us a plan, which is a 10-year plan up to 2026. And there, I don't have a report with me, but I have a pretty good memory. They said, oh, Butlera Plan will be not handled at this, this stage. So I don't know if they agreed with that, if there's a change in their mind or something. If they do, we'd like to know that. And we have issues with each of these plans, like as somebody in, before me mentioned, we just saw the plan, and we, we, we have comments on each one of the tracks. And, and some gentleman or some person brought it up, what if, do we have a contingency plan? And that's try to be proactive. Contingency being, you have a primary plan, you have backup plan, and primary and backup fail, you back, go back to contingency plan. And that's NASA definitions, and I, I understand what that means. So we need to have a plan which is sort of three layers down. What if, what if, and what if? And that's what we need to do. And this plan is really not very innovative. As I said, I did my own plans for multipurpose, multi-use, and then all income, all community parking. And what we can do is, we, the municipality, which is what, what our government is, you have to show the leadership, you have to be proactive, you have to be innovative. We are here as citizens to work with you. We have so much talent. If I can do it, trust me, there are 100 times better people than me who can do this. I did it, and I know people who are there to help me and help us. Please get us involved. Don't wait for two months just to have this meeting. We should have this two weeks after the ruling came, and we would have been that far ahead. Somebody made a point that we don't have enough schedule to work. Of course you don't have because we wasted six weeks. And we, I did this in, in two and a half weeks. And you can do it, and we can do it together. We really have the talent. Let's work it. Let's listen to each other. I'm just one person, but look at all the talent we hear. I know what they mean. And I have been working on this, these issues, working with the city. I worked with the cities on other issues, so really, we, we need to work together. Please, listen. And I wish I could go on and I can talk. On each of the items in there, I took notes. I'll be sharing those with Mr. Kummer. I know I, I can reach you and, and everybody else.
Thank you.
Please, please work with us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I'm Kate Warren. And then Robert Powell after that.
Kate Warren, Jefferson Road, 48-year resident. First, I would like to congratulate everyone, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Board, but I am a member of the Housing Board. I think the plan is okay. What I'm concerned, one thing I'm concerned about is if the court or Fair Share Housing actually looks at the municipally-owned land that's not really included except for the parking lot, you know, like that. I, I hope that they're not going to say, this is not acceptable, and you really need to step up and use some of your own land for more housing. I understand that the only lot of land now that you are deeming 100% affordable would be the Maple Franklin parking lot. And although I understand that, when you look at the density there that you're proposing, I didn't quite understand the comparison of the pictures. It didn't really resonate with me or educate me to get a sense of, and I can only know the density of Avalon Bay. So adding another 80 units across the street without having a really good design that is open and a lot of green space, I'm not quite sure that that number of units, although I understand the need for that many of units, is a good plot there. I'm wondering if this PowerPoint will be available to the residents and where we might find it?
It will be.
I'm sorry, where will it be?
It will be on the website.
Okay. And so generally, I understand the need to move forward in a hurry, but as a member of the Affordable Housing Board, I'm really dismayed. I don't quite understand hiding behind the veil of we're in litigation when boards are held to the same standard as elected officials where everything that is shared with us is to remain confidential. And we certainly could have been in on those discussions much earlier and given input. I believe that the members of the Affordable Housing Board in total have probably more experience with affordable housing issues than many of the, our elected officials. So not to say that you don't know, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying the collective wisdom of the board could have been very helpful in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Powell.
Hi, Jenny. I signed my name on the sheet thinking it was just a record-keeping thing, but I'm happy to make a quick couple of remarks. Our firm, Nassau Capital, is based here in Princeton. I've lived in Princeton for 40-some years, and we serve as financial advisors to public housing authorities in New Jersey as well as about 25 municipalities that are doing affordable housing financing. I'll pick up on just a couple of comments Ed made about financing. I think, first of all, this is a smart plan. I also think that if you have a chance to dig a little deeper, you might look at the Franklin Avenue project because I believe it can generate more than 60 affordable units in a smart plan with open space. I had a chance to talk with Jack West about this a couple of weeks ago as we were just sketching some things out. Number two, Princeton's applications that come with this plan for 9% tax credits, I think are going to have a very strong scoring and possibility for succeeding. We do a lot of work at HMFA on 4% and 9% credits, and the scoring is competitive. And without going into all the details, I know the scoring sheet by heart, and you're going to score really high. Stay with that. The 9%, 100% affordable direction you're going on Franklin is really smart. It reduces density, and I commend you for doing that. So I think you're heading in the right direction, and I appreciate the work that you put into it. Thanks.
Thank you. And last is, on the sign-up sheet is Chris Foglio. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Good evening. Thank you for everyone putting the time into the plan. I have to admit, please don't throw anything at me, I did serve as the Chair of Council on Affordable Housing. I had been the Executive Director of the HMFA. I am a Princeton resident. I am the president of that affordable housing company in Lawrenceville. I didn't plug them for the advertisement. I've built 3,000 units in New Jersey. I just did a groundbreaking for Plainsboro on their municipal project. I have lived and breathed the affordable housing world for the last 35 years. I know I look very young, but I started. And my husband is, had been the former mayor of Trenton, Doug Palmer, so we've been, we've been around this for a while. I did want to ask a question. I saw the units that were up with no credits, and I was wondering if the township has considered doing any major renovations to those units so that they could be considered for COA credit? Because if you rehabilitate those units, they may be eligible for COA credit. I am doing that in a few towns, and there's a lot of units over there, so I would ask that maybe that would come under consideration. I did want to put on the table, I also has served as the co-chair of Governor Murphy's Housing Committee for Transition, and the QAP, the Qualified Allocation Plan for the new tax credits, is under consideration, and that's going to be changed next year. And I really should caution you that the scoring points that we all are so focused on is going to change. And that is an opportunity. And I am one voice of many that feel, and this is where I really have to underscore the fact that, and Shirley was part of this, we were part of the very beginning of COA. And I know what the original legislative intent of COA was. I was a legislative staffer during that period of time. And it was not to be a fiscal responsibility of municipalities to pay for affordable housing. And there was supposed to be a state, I'm going to lose all my time, but it was not supposed to be a burden of municipalities from a fiscal standpoint, and the state was supposed to stand next to municipalities and help pay for that. And there are very strong voices in Trenton right now that are looking for those subsidies. And I know that there is a legal requirement under the COA rules that there must be an introduction of a bond ordinance. But please be clear that the court process, and I know that Chairman, you asked about, what do you have to produce in the court? What you have to produce in the court is not that you have the funding for each of those components, but you have a realistic opportunity to show that those projects can be funded. In the history of the COA process, in the court and in COA, no municipality in the 40 years has ever been asked or required to bond. Have there been municipalities who have decided to bond? They have, but nobody has ever been required. But you do have to do a resolution, and I can understand from a municipal perspective that that's a big ask for people. So that is an obligation that you will have to wrestle with as public officials, but you should know that it has never been forced on a municipality. And if you read the papers today, you can see that $80 million of balanced housing funds, which is our trust fund for affordable housing, has been moved to the, to the budget. So those are things we will be fighting for, but you have seven years. And I have to, and I'm an optimist, and I have to believe that there will be affordable housing funding at some point in the state, but you do have some opportunities. And the other good point, because I'm an optimist, is that HUD is even moving in the direction with the low-income tax credit program to allow for income averaging, which helps the dynamics of the financing, as Bob was pointing to, which allows for higher rents so that the drag on the numbers allows for higher mortgages in the program to allow for, for less subsidy to be necessary from the municipalities. So I think we're on a good trend as you look for your, at what options you have for 100% municipal projects. And now I'll shut up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would, um, just, as I'll ask, as a follow-up... Just, I'll ask, as a follow-up, just while you just spoke, I wondered if Alan or Trishka wanted to weigh in on our options for changing our plan or having new opportunities that come up when legislation changes in the period right now, considering the litigation timeline that we've been given by the judge? Do you understand my question?
I think I understand your question. I mean, right now, the timeline that we're under, we've got a, we've got a July 24th compliance hearing.
I mean, we just heard that some things might change and would enable us to, say, do more 100% affordable housing.
You can always, you can always apply to amend your plan. So even once you put your plan in place after your compliance hearing, you can always go back and apply to the court, just as you could with COA, for amendments to that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Shirley, I think, wants to add to that.
In the Fair Share Plan, we will have a paragraph that states that Princeton reserves the right to amend one or two, some of the components of the plan if circumstances change. But right now, we're looking at, as we keep saying, this deadline and a plan and under the court order, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, now I'll get to the rest of the people who didn't sign up. William Wolfe and then Mary Clerman on deck. I mean, who did sign up. I just got their names. William Wolfe. And then people who didn't sign up can speak.
I'll be brief. I just want to say, on my behalf and those taxpayers that I've talked to, who realize that there's an impact to the school system when you build five times as much housing to get the required affordable housing. And I'd like to see some projections of those numbers, but from what I've seen so far, I'd rather go all affordable housing rather than build 20% affordable. And even though that may require a bond issue, I think the taxpayers would win in the end. Thank you.
Next is Mary Clerman.
Mary Clerman, Harris Road. I understand and respect the responsibility that you've taken to work out a program that is reasonable to you, but I want to echo the idea that there's so much interest in this over the last two to three years that you, that you could have gotten so much more input and so much more feedback and support from the community by actually asking other people for more public, even informal input from one person on your group to whatever number of neighbors could have been gathered. In addition to that, I'd like to say that I did a little research myself on this a couple of years ago. There was a Pritzker Prize winner, Alejandro Alavina, Arvina, who works with a company in Chile called Eli Mental. And I asked him if his company would be interested in making a proposal to Princeton. And he said, sure, what's the, what's the size of the property? And at that time, I couldn't say. But it turns out that he was able to build 7,000 units of affordable housing for $1,000 per unit, not $250,000. So even if you built them here, maybe they'd cost $10,000 a unit, but they wouldn't cost $250,000. When I spoke to one of the officials in town, I was told that Princeton doesn't recruit outside. But I don't see why you couldn't just write a letter, make a call and say, could we do this? The other concern that I have is, again, with the necessity for rental units. My observation so far, which is not professional, is that Avalon Bay is not full. And the reason, one reason it's not full is that it's very expensive. The other thing is that I read in the paper, in The Times, a couple of years ago, that even the building industry was saying that the rental market in New Jersey is saturated, that there is no great need for these apartments and certainly not for expensive apartments. So to put your money into, or to put your faith into expanding a situation where we have more kids and more people than we can handle, doesn't seem to be a solution to the problem. I wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, I'm David Caddy. I live at 24 Moore Street. Five years ago, I founded Walkable Princeton to support affordable housing. I'm part of also the Princeton Progressive Action Group that's been formed to support this issue. I'd like to say I welcome this housing. I also welcome the market rate housing required to build it. If you go back in the Princeton newspapers, back to 1955, when they adopted zoning resolution for lower density in the township, the stated goal was to keep out the lower economic classes. And that's a goal that has been achieved in Princeton. It has a wall. Princeton has a wall around it. It's a wall a million dollars high. That's the cost of the average home. And so for us to say that we don't need housing, I welcome this housing as a resident. And as a resident of the Central Business District, in a very positive sense, I think that can work for everyone regardless of what they think of the added new housing, I would encourage, we should look to the heart of the town. The former borough has more than 20,000 jobs in it. And it has six jobs for every residence, six jobs for every residence. The recommended ratio is one and a half to one. The outcome of that is that 20,000 people drive in every day into the former borough, whereas the residents of the borough, more of them walk to work than drive. More of them, like myself, walk to work than drive. And they don't just walk to work, they walk to stores, they walk to restaurants, they take transit. You can live, I have lived in Princeton car-free when I first came out of college. My family lives, though we have two jobs, we live with one car. I drive six miles a week, six miles a week. We should look, I see this housing, I understand you're looking at large plots of land, but most of those plots of land and most of that suggested housing is on the fringe of town outside of the walkable core. And if we want, there is space in the heart of Princeton. There are parking lots on Witherspoon Street, on Park Place, there's space where we can put housing. If we upzone, if you take away parking requirements, people already live, we put up housing on Spring Street with no parking where people live and they walk. That, I think, for those who don't like this mandate from the court, is the way that we can be most environmentally friendly. We can, apartments in town have the fewest children to add to the schools. There are a lot of childless households who would relocate to Princeton, who work in Princeton. Just as a thought, we're working on a position paper that we'll be happy to get to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Eve Niedergang?
Eve Niedergang, 15 Forrester Drive. I'm wondering if other sites were considered, for example, the Bank of America site or other sites on the Harrison-Nassau area where there seems to be room for development. I'm wondering why that wasn't considered. I'm also assuming that since the conversations that you were having were private, that you have consulted with the landowners at each of these major sites for development. And I'm wondering, I know that in the past, Edens, for example, has not been interested in building housing on top of the shopping center. So I'd like a little bit more information about that. And again, thank you for all this hard work and for presenting this plan.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Umar and I live on Griks Farm, which is a mixed development. And I, my kids grew up there and I think that's a great idea. The town did a great job of developing Griks Farm. It's a mixed development. I think that's a great idea where markets unit and affordable units are together. And I think if we can build housing on the pattern of Griks Farm, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public. I wanted to answer on behalf of the council, probably the planning board, although I haven't spoken to everyone, about one of the concerns, and that's about the process. I think all of us share the frustration that we could not have a normal public process, that we pride ourselves in normally. We try to have, be transparent and invite public participation in all of our decisions. And it was extremely frustrating to not be able to do that. But we were advised by our lawyers and, you know, very strongly that for various reasons, we could not, we couldn't do it because this is not a normal planning process. This is part of litigation. I don't know if any of you want to add to that? Okay. And then the second thing is about the schoolchildren. Some of you might know this, but we're precluded by the law, if not our morals, by, from considering the impact of school enrollment on any of these decisions. So I'm just letting you know that. So I think Gail's been keeping track of the other questions, so maybe you could start. Oh, Mark, did you have some things that you, do you have, are you ready for some answers? Okay, great.
One, I want just to follow up on the issue of the schoolchildren. One thing I do want everyone to understand throughout this process, our former planner has been working with the school districts. Their plans that they currently have also include looking at where the potential number of units that would be developed. They are included in the plans that they're currently under. So that has been, we've been working very closely with the school district on that issue. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the university properties or Lower Alexander and the Butler Tract, Franklin and Maple. To give you some idea in terms of the density, it's about half the density of Avalon Bay on that property. And I just wanted to correct something, that Lower Alexander does not include the golf course, it's the other side of the street. And we have had discussions with the property owners, any of the properties where there are actually, you know, some initial conversations with the property owners of those developments. And then the other thing is redevelopment, one of the things that we have to do is as we go into our compliance hearing, we have to be able to show that these properties will be developed. Redevelopment sites are a lot, lot more difficult to do. So you'll see those that we could, we put in the plan, but we do not have a lot of redevelopment sites. They are the more difficult sites.
Right. I think that answers the question of, did we consider certain sites? Some of them are, were more difficult and we did consult with the owners of the other sites. Or we might have consulted with the owners of the other sites too. For various reasons, we weren't able to put them in the plan, although most of them are small and wouldn't make a material difference. Any other question?
I think that there's been more commentary than questions. And I'm not sure whether we can answer the questions. I think Mark has gotten to the ones that I noted, particularly the school issue, which we knew. The question of what other municipal lots, can't hear me? What other municipal lots were considered, were they considered? Several people have asked about backup plans. I can't answer that. I don't know. But if somebody who's been involved can, if there are backup plans, you don't have to tell us what they are, just as long as we know if there are some.
Well, you know, also about the municipal sites, some of them aren't available to us yet, so they could be conceivably used in the future.
Right. A number of the sites that currently people have identified are actually in use or either in use by municipal purposes. I know a lot of times people see the firehouses. Those are in use. In addition, the yields on those properties are quite small. It's something that, as we look at the plan, we evaluated and made some other decisions, not as if we cannot at some other point look to do affordable housing there at some point in the future. But as part of this plan, we just didn't, we evaluated and made the decision that they were not appropriate at this point.
I guess in that, I would point out that with any development in town that's over five units, and I guess that's in the downtown, the old borough, under the town, the ordinances, one must be affordable. And that will continue to be the case regardless of this plan.
Okay, so with that, I want to thank everyone and we have been listening. We are considering, I've heard a lot of interesting comments tonight and I'm sure we all have and we're going to be thinking about this. And you all have this sheet that has the other, the next steps. And so you're welcome to come to those meetings and you're welcome to contact any of us at any time. Our email addresses are on the municipal website, so that's probably the best way to reach us. So thank everyone for your comments.
Can you tell us how to find the process on the website?
Oh, there, these documents are going to be on the website and I believe, is there an affordable housing page on the website now?
Actually, tomorrow morning, there will be, on the front page, there will be a resource link that will link you to a page which will have the presentation, it will have the timelines, the judges' decisions. So a lot of that information will start to be on the website beginning tomorrow.
Okay. And one hint about the website is to scroll down because some of the reports, sometimes there's reports that we've put out that are near the bottom, the link to them. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And planning board members, is there a motion to adjourn? Yes.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.